The co-chair or whatever they do, since we're no longer our chairmen. Uh, the, the order of business we've got tonight, first thing is to choose our officers for our committee.
I am recording by the way.
Excuse me?
I am recording by the way.
Yes.
If you got the headset.
Recording. The, the committee has changed its status and is no longer an ad hoc committee, it is a standing committee. And because of that, uh, a number of things have changed, uh. We have a, a form that we all have to fill out and, and, uh, both to the, both of allegiance of the town and the state and all that sort of thing as members of the standing committee. There's a little bit of action going on, uh, but I guess we'll, we'll discuss that after we choose some, somebody to lead out. I'm, I'm here by default, so.
Second.
I agree.
Okay.
Looks like, it looks like the jury has, alright.
Well, your elections be that easy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know, and all this.
I had, I had a church in Plymouth, New Hampshire years ago and just a little small group. Most of them were related with every two years you had to choose officers. One of the guys said, gosh, there's, there's just so many, we just have to switch around. I, I, we keep the same ones we had last year. All in favor of mine? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but, uh, we need, uh, I don't know if we need a co-chair or not, but we, we certainly need a secretary.
It wouldn't hurt to have a co just in case.
Yeah, right, right. And, uh, Melissa is recording, uh. I don't, if. Well, you have a secretary? Melissa?
Well, I was hoping to go for vice chair if anyone was interested in.
Yeah, well, you know, Melissa's.
I agree.
No.
I know.
Is everybody in favor of?
Everybody, yeah, all, all, this would co-chair, okay. Now, the secretary, that may, that might get harder amongst the group here.
I don't want that.
I will assist anyone who wants to do it. Or, if not.
I've done it all my way.
Can you do both?
I can do both, if, and, and you know, if later on someone expresses a desire to do it, I can be both. And then I can train them on how to do it.
On favor, of course.
And then if Dennis is out, I can help him do whatever. So, and all of us can.
Yeah, we're all.
We're all, yes, it's a small group, but all in one group.
Yeah.
That's a. A, uh, standing committee policy, which I don't wanna, which, five, sorry, favors long, um. I don't know if we, this is, if we need to go through the whole thing.
Read it. I know the town has it, but I would almost vote just to adopt that policy.
Yeah.
That's, has everything that we need for like conducting meetings and.
Right.
What's expected and.
It, uh, the, the select board approved our committee of twenty-three or four members or something like that, which is, which is unusual because they, they had limited standing committees before to five voting members, but, uh. Now that it's a standing committee, we have two members who are no longer eligible to vote because they're not Sangiovese residents. And that is, help me out.
Can you call it?
Yeah.
Send it. Send it.
Yeah.
Um.
But I'd still like them to.
Yeah.
They want it because.
And anybody is welcome.
Cause we have so much.
Not a Sangiovese resident, he cannot have voting done.
But you can still make a difference and an impact.
So any, can we just have a synopsis of what that is?
Excuse me?
Just, is there anything we need to know on that?
Well.
Behave.
Behave.
Do things right.
Is it routine, routine?
Integrity.
And it's meeting decorum, uh, strive to be accurate in statements, avoid profound, profane language, disruptive behavior, uh, regular attendance, uh, minutes and recording. Um, let's see.
I don't know if we adopted.
Right, right, yeah. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Is there anything about?
Role, role of committee members, attend as many meetings as possible, work with other departments, meet publicly discussed, fulfill the committee's charge, elect chair, vice chair, secretary. Let's see. Set, role of the chair, set the meeting time, date, location, set the agenda, uh. This might, this might be a little bit of an issue, ensure that a quorum fifty-one percent of rate of committee membership is present before conducting meetings, uh.
I think we need to start having, you know, our regular meetings and then see who shows up and then we can take another like tally of who wants to be involved and then maybe they can change it.
Attendance, probably this needs to be a little.
Yeah, just sign the attendance sheet.
Sign the, sign the, if you can.
But we'll.
Not bump anybody if they're not sure.
No, this, this is just to get us going tonight and get us started, uh.
She has anything, uh, for you? Any, of what type of responsibility for this group to report to this, this select board or anything like that, or be represented?
I, I, that sounds logical. Uh.
I'm thinking I was only another standing committee and it was something when I didn't write up, definitely I could do that.
I, I would think, I would think agenda called order will be known to correspond.
That's when we were meeting in church, we had to, they wanted us to, uh, report to the select.
Okay, yeah. All, all boards and committees shall furnish a copy of outgoing or incoming written correspondence to the Sangiovese Town Manager. Uh, all boards, they'll send electronic copy of all emails they sent into the municipal office. Um, I don't see that about reporting to the, to the select board where that, that, that sounds like a logical.
Yeah.
Process. Oh yeah, submit draft and improvements, including copies of supporting documents to the town office as soon as possible for distribution to board of select and public record. Yeah, yeah, you're right. Um. Okay, uh. Brian had one grant that he applied for, for up to thirty thousand dollars, uh, and he, he submitted it, we didn't get anything out of it. He, he didn't have really adequate basis for submitting it to begin with, he didn't have the information he needed. And, so Paul, you've checked on the, the state, the ten million dollars and that's in limbo at this point.
They said it didn't be available.
Till fall.
Other than that, it's.
Okay. Okay.
That requires twenty-five percent.
Right.
Buying from the debt.
Right. Right.
I, I call the office and the gas.
Okay, so they're gonna notify us, we're gonna, we're gonna submit an application of some sort, I would assume.
I don't, two, I don't know what else. I think I.
Okay, okay.
We can research too, like if there's, if it's posted, what the requirements will be or. So, yeah.
The, uh.
You go to the state treasurer's website and sure it'll be there.
Okay. Uh, let's see what else happened. The bombs have to be sold before they can get the money. I see, okay.
And then the money comes in. Put it all together and that's what they do, that's what they say.
Maybe I oughta take a few million and go buy a couple bombs. Well. The.
Well, it's actually borrowed.
Right, right.
They like to tell.
Right, right. Um. We had approved at the town meeting, uh, up to four hundred and forty thousand dollars to, for, I would work on the town hall, uh. If we would take all that out of the town copper right now, it would leave them a little tight, uh. And they had suggested setting two hundred and fifty thousand aside in a, uh,
It's server.
Designated reserve, a reserve account. And they got some pushback, the select board got pushback on it, said that they don't have the, told them they didn't have the right to do that. Uh.
Who said?
I said it's Dr. Cap.
I, I, I will, I don't know the name, but I, I think, I think yes.
By the select board.
I, I.
It's probably just somebody who's on a committee or something.
Uh, but any, anyway, they were told at the select board, last select board I, we were here and they said that they weren't sure about that, they've contacted the state attorney and they said, ah, it'd be kind of gray and they were a little nebulous on it, uh. Basically what they decided to do is, there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars which is designated for the town hall and it's, it's sitting in the general fund right now, it's not going anywhere, nobody's gonna spend it, no, nobody's gonna touch it. And, but it, they can't put it into a designated account until we have the town meeting, which is scheduled for March twenty-ninth.
Yeah, so they're gonna put a warrant in to word it so it's black and white, so like.
And then if that gets passed, that's done with that.
And I also asked a question about, um, if we wanted to start fundraising, how, how would that work? So Brian was gonna get back to us because we might wanna start fundraising before we have the town meeting. I mean, it's still two months away. I know there's people eager to do it, but just to get our ducks in a row, like, okay, now if we collect money for the town, we need to be able to speak to it and where it's going.
So that's where that stands, um. The engineering firm, the, the engineer who's in charge, um, is, is incommunicado. He doesn't respond to phone calls or emails or messages or anything else, but he has, uh, he has a fellow working for him who has come around and, uh, I don't think he's an engineer, but he's, he's a good man. Um, and he's, he's the one that's handling, they're part of it and we've met twice. Um, he had two outfits come and look at the roofs. Um, one out of mid main roofing, I don't know if it's bag or water, but one on the other. And he had another guy that came out of Vermont and I was here to meet and talk with them. Um, and they're not terribly worried about the roof. Yes, there's, there's problems, uh. There was, uh, water running down the chimney in the attic, um, of that chimney on that side. Uh, and frozen, there was ice, ice on the chimney, so we know that's leaking, um. The, and, and both, both of the outfits that looked at it agreed with me that probably that roof was leaking in a number of places. And they put a new rubber membrane on the center portion of it, the flat section. And that was done sometime after two thousand eight. We can't find exactly, but we did find the, uh, a roll of roofing left up there that's dated two thousand eight. So we know it was left, it was after that. It's relatively new and it's in, it's in fine shape as far as we can tell. Uh, the staining on the timbers and things up there, which appears that it was leaking before they put that roof. Um. There's been leaking since then and we, we've got two or three broken shingles up there, you can, you go around, you can see a little pinhole of light up through an opening here or there where there's a broken shingle, uh. The we, we, when Patrick was here, uh, last, a year ago, December, they had that big rainstorm that blew everything from the north side and, uh, uh, he went upstairs and he said there was a skating rink on the floor upstairs, it was broken, so. And, uh, that, we, myself and these other two roofing outfits are pretty much in agreement that it blew up, that there was snow on the valleys on the north side and it blew in there and, and with all the rain and that's where it probably came from. Uh, they're looking at probably stripping the valleys on that north dormer and putting some waterproofing under there, uh, fixing the flashing on that chimney. There's a vent pipe on the north side that's been leaking. Uh, somebody has addressed it because there's a bunch of silicone squirted up in there, so it's, somebody saw it before. Uh, but they looked at those, uh, and they think it's easily doable, the, uh, mid main roofing said, well, probably two men in a week with a lift, uh. We'll get everything taken care of. The guy from Vermont, he, he's gonna send estimates, we don't have them yet, but, uh, it, it's something that can be done and should be done as soon as possible, but we can't really spend that money until March twenty-ninth. I guess is what we're gonna say. And, and they're not gonna do anything on a roof before then anyways.
When did their estimates come in? Did they give estimates?
No, no, we don't have the estimates yet, uh. I, I think the, the fellow from Vermont was kinda thinking, he, he thought maybe twenty thousand would cover it, but, uh, I don't know. Uh, that's, that's not enough, that's not a formal estimate, he was just talking, uh. One of the big things is the rental of a, a boom is big enough to get up there and that's, that's gonna run in the five to seven thousand dollar range or something like that. And, and that's where we're at, uh. These, the George Bell is the fellow's name that, that we're dealing with now and he is that's number one issue in, on his agenda is to get the roof fixed. Number two issue is to deal with the foundation and the water infiltration of the foundation, that the parking lot is too high and the water is running into the basement and pushing all those walls, um, and, and basically the, the foundation and the roof are the two big issues. Most of the other issues that, that we dealt with before are, are our mine, you know, fire extinguishers and exit lights and, and.
Paint chips.
Some of that other stuff. And that's that's where we're at, uh, as near as I can tell. You know, we, we had dealt in our committee before, before we went to the town meeting with the need of fixing the foundation of doing something with the parking lot and fixing the roof and basically, as I see it, they're covering the same territory that we did and we're just gonna pay them to do it. And they have a contract. That contract.
Is that the one that I sent you?
Yes.
I have a couple I tried to go. Oops, sorry.
Yes. It outlines some of the, uh, some of the fees and, and. What they would. Yeah. There's a fee channel in there of what they would charge. I, I've looked at it, I'm not exactly sure how to break it all down, but.
Page four, it starts from the bottom of page four.
But I, I don't think we were so far off before from what they are, they're just, uh, and, and the fellow who's doing the work is not a licensed engineer as far as I consider. That was the. That's, that's what we had foisted upon us, so.
Was he the one pointing in this recently or factual?
No, this, this George Bell is the fellow who's working. He works for this engineer out of, uh, Skowhegan. Yes.
But he's been working with us for a while?
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's a, he's an old school fellow. Uh. And, and, and he obviously knows his job.
Go with the bottom line on this?
Well, I don't know. I don't know that we had the bottom line, we have.
Not until like, everything has been.
Yeah, see, for services as, as they, as they unfold.
This is just to get him started, like, hey, this is.
Right.
A breakdown.
But beyond that, um. Until we get more information of his outfit, what we would like to have is before town meeting on March twenty-nine, to have some substantial figures to work with, um, some estimates and see where we go from there, I guess. We, we're gonna be, we're gonna be at the same spot that we were a year ago at town meeting. Except that we'll, we'll have an engineering firm who's giving the, the information instead of our committee.
And we'll have access to the building.
And, right, and we have access to the building, that, that, that's a big difference.
Well, to do the work that.
Yes.
That, that's a big difference now, you know, and, yeah, we can go in and, and investigate things, you know, and we would have had better figures at last town meeting if we hadn't been shut out.
Different year.
We, we had a few guesses that we'd thrown out, but that's all, the best we could do.
I think we were pretty close.
I had actually talked with mid main roofings before and, and asked them to give them up and I was gonna, they could not have access.
So this is the same people that are coming up now?
Yeah, one of them.
One of them.
Yep.
Is that the one in Kennesaw? Um, London, Kennesaw, is that the one?
No.
No?
No, mid, I don't, mid main roofing, I think they're out of there.
It's a roofing. Quite a big roofing firm and I think it's Glenburg.
Glenburg.
Uh, they're great.
Might be, yeah, I'm not sure.
He went around and got like a couple of quotes, so.
Yeah, yeah.
They're pretty reasonable.
Yeah, George is, is gonna get two, at least two polls at least, maybe more, we'll see. Um. And beyond that, I don't know that we can go much further.
Yeah, we just kinda wanted to make sure we were up to date and that we established our first meeting, um. Until we have something from the select board or an update or some kind of tasks for us, then, you know, then Dennis can call another meeting, but I did wanna, um, talk to you, but I'll probably send out another email too, because we won't be able to meet another Tuesday for like another three weeks, but I don't even think we were we were thinking like once a month.
You know.
If, or as needed.
Yeah. Uh.
But.
Until we get some more information out of this engineering firm and something changes with the town, I, I don't know that we're gonna be able to do much.
I'd like to have a meeting where we can have the engineer come in and we ask questions, you know? Cause he had mentioned in the beginning that he would like to speak to the committee and ask questions, like, we're here, I've emailed him, I've called him. You know, the town, uh, Brian has called and, and messaged him, so we're trying. Um, but do, are Tuesdays Tuesday work for you guys or is there a better day?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we have to establish our next meeting date and, and I don't know if we want to set a date now or if we don't have anything more to deal with, uh, there, there's no sense holding a meeting just to have a meeting unless we've got.
Budget receipts next week, is that, next Tuesday? We can do it then.
No.
So, I think they'll wrap everything up next week. Give us.
Okay.
And that's we have to go to the budget meeting from this?
Well, that's, that's a good question.
I mean, we do have those.
Right.
It's gonna go down, meaning, right.
Yeah, so we.
Well, I.
Twenty-nine thousand dollars for a room?
That's a, that's just a, off the cuff, that, that's not any, any firm figure anyway.
So I can see if we're available, like, February twenty-fifth, if, if we're available to meet on the twenty-fifth, cause I know you said three weeks out, but this would still put one, two, three, four, that would be five weeks out, it's like a month. We still, we'd still be able to update on how the money situation's gonna work. There might be people that wanna get together with fundraising. I'd like more people to respond to emails so I can kind of feel out what they're, what they're looking for. But also, has, has any of y'all's email changed or is it the same as last year? I, that's probably a question I should ask too.
Text names and the email. Because I get so many that I have to kinda go.
Well.
I get junk.
What about?
And I get a new email and I have to reach.
About text messages?
Text messages, I respond to text messages completely. I always get those.
So maybe I'll just do both for next time. And, oh, I, I do have another question.
I can try to.
Um, I still have access to the town hall committee YouTube and email and still all those files, so do we want to give our information to, like, our recording and stuff to Kelsey and our updates for the town to put on their website? Or do we want to put it on our old town hall committee YouTube channel? You, do you care either way? No.
Doesn't make a difference.
Okay.
It doesn't.
I just thought it would be good kinda keeping it all together and then, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, whatever is easiest for you, I guess, secretary, whichever you think is, well, what you think is best.
I, I'm off the kiss principle, keep it simple.
Yeah, I can just put it in there and then just tell them where to find it. I'll send the meeting notes to the town to post on our town website. But.
So this recording will be posted on the town website?
No, on the YouTube channel.
This is YouTube.
Mm-hmm, yeah, just put pictures up and the recording.
Yes, indeed.
Um, put anything into the town reports, if we also write the order, do we have to have a summary of what we do and what would be the deadline for that?
I would think we should.
It's, should be soon, cause they just told me I had to have the Sangiovese Historical Society one in, so.
Okay.
Didn't we have one in last year? We had something in last year for ad hoc, but we just had to write one.
Right.
We do need to, need to, uh, get that ready, so we should have a meeting before the deadline for town reports. Kinda use the same one we had last year and just update it with some mail.
I heard it, maybe?
I hadn't bothered that, um. If we are a standing committee, then probably we, we should have a.
Something to go to the town board, it's made.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um. Well, I guess we'd better ask Michelle or Brian with what we do.
What they want, yeah.
I don't know.
I think it'd be easy to rewrite it and then we can just email it amongst each other, the committee and just, you know, for free to.
What if you could come up with?
Collaborate.
I'll keep working with Brian and George, uh. George an interesting fellow, he, he's, he's knowledgeable, he's, uh, interesting fellow, I, I, I think he, he's, how the mind helps it out. This fellow, uh, from Vermont, he was a fellow that he's worked with. And, uh, he talked about the expense of running a lift, he said, well, I'll see what I can do with Ken and Vic Rinaldi, see if they can donate one for it. He, he's.
Good?
He, he's on our side. He's on our side, we'll see what happens. He's on our side, we'll see what happens, you know, but he's
So that would be for the roof, right?
We got to fix the roof.
Got to fix the roof.
That's number one.
I think that we need to get some estimates and
Yeah.
If the town budget affects the roof.
Yeah.
If we go
If we don't fix it, just it's not gonna be the roof leaking, water running down.
Did say the town will fix the roof.
There was a line item they were supposed to put in it for the roof.
For the roof, there was, because I remember, I think it was Michael Walk that said it. Somebody was, yeah, I remember being here.
It's documented somewhere.
It's documented somewhere in gosh, I don't even know what the meeting we did, but it was we all concerned about the roof leaking, it could ruin the building. Yeah, and there was You remember the discussion, yes, yes, the town will take care of that. I remember that.
Yeah.
But there's hours to go back to see where that was, but Jeff might remember it.
Maybe people are out of town that weren't
Yeah.
Yeah, with an appropriate twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take it out of surplus, take it wherever they want.
Yeah.
Anybody can say what they want to say about we can't take money out of surplus or whatever.
Right.
Thank you, thank you.
The the reason why I was saying was that back before this new select board, or now presently with the new select board that say we can't go until the, which which is it? Is it now?
They they have been told, or I I won't
Advised.
Threatened, advised, that they that they don't have the right to set up a reserve account.
The select board was advised?
Yes. At town meeting. They said we have to do, they they uh they talked with the, I'm not sure if it was the municipal association or if it was town attorney, one or the other.
They just posted at the last select board meeting, so it's it's on the recording, but they had mentioned that they needed to well, they were going to talk to the lawyers and then make sure, you know, they can, what they can and cannot do. But also, they were recommended to rewrite the warrant, so it's black and white, so there's no question.
It seems seems very clear to me. It's clear to me, but it, somebody else is questioning it, and they're gonna they're gonna question everything that we do. That that's that's the nature of the the game at this point, so. Well, that's that's the reason we we talked about it, they said, well, we can have a special town meeting to 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 you know, vote that through, or we can wait till town meeting March twenty nine. There's no roofing that's gonna take place before March twenty ninth anyway, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll let the money, the money is gonna sit, and nobody's gonna scound with it.
It's on a sweep account.
It was just curiosity.
Yeah.
Details.
We set up a reserve account and move whatever.
Right.
You know, for the purpose of fixing the town hall.
Right.
But if they move two hundred thousand dollars from the surplus, and two hundred thousand dollars will be in there.
Right.
It'll allow the selectmen to to spend it as they
Right. And hopefully, we can get into the, uh foot in the door on the grant applications. And if if we if we can use our two hundred or two hundred fifty thousand or whatever it it amounts to as our twenty five percent matching fund, then then we get four times much out of it.
That's right. That's right.
Yep, that would be great.
But people are gonna ask questions at the town meeting, annual town meeting as well, so we wanna make sure we get enough information to be able to speak with it.
Yeah. And and I don't know what other, what other grant avenues there are out there. I I'm not up on that stuff.
I spent a whole day looking them up and gave Brian the list that would both be nonprofit and profit.
Yeah.
And but the municipal ones were a lot for non for municipal.
Does does Brian have that list?
Yeah, he has that list, but the trouble is, um some you can't apply until February. Some you can't apply until June.
Right.
But it shouldn't have enough information to say what you need to have.
Exactly.
Ready, so we can have them just waiting for it to pay.
He 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 thought there was, it was a chance of thirty thousand dollars, he threw it out there for the roof, well, not knowing what the roof was gonna cost, you know, he didn't have really concrete figures to 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 present. Uh and he didn't get it, so, but he tried, so.
So with this listing, he needs contract, uh he needs specific figures
Right.
For the estimates first.
We need specific figures, we need to come in with something.
We can't go with the estimates that you got.
No, they're they're gonna prepare their own, and and that's all right.
Yeah, that's all right.
Yeah, so we're paying them.
I'll I'll try to work with George and and steer him a little bit on some of the work that we've done. There's no sense reinventing the wheel on some of that stuff, but but he, I don't think he's as concerned that the report that we had that condemned the building because of the foundation, the roof, the fire extinguishers, the exit lights and all that sort of stuff, he's not going by that. He's going by what it's gonna take to save the building. And basically, he's looking at roof and foundation parking lot area right now. Uh I don't think that he's that concerned with who expects the fire extinguishers and whether the exit light works.
Those are little things.
Those are minor things that we can take care of on our own.
Yeah.
We should ask Stephen King for some money.
Well, somebody said
Write a letter.
Somebody said Stephen King, somebody said
And all you gotta do is reach out to him, he's from this area.
Elaine Quimby grew up, she lived in Dover for years, her her son, who now handles her money went to Head Start in the what used to be the the drugstore where the
She had the business in Gilford, and there were a lot of Samuel people that worked there, so.
My my mother taught Head Start, and she taught.
So, you know, there's a connection there.
Yeah, if if somebody, if we can tap that, I I don't, I don't know how to do it.
And that's where we're, the question is, how do we manage fundraising, right? Because they're gonna have to write something to the town, and it has to be to what account, right, specifically. So where do we point people to? Give us a chat.
What uh Mr. Bell? Yeah, he he seemed to have some connection to Quimby.
You have Roxanne from Quimby?
Yes.
Yeah.
She seemed to know something.
Yes, she said that Roxanne um was asking her what it would cost.
Well, okay, there was there was there was a connection.
That she stood up and she said, I wanna know what it costs, and Roxanne wants to know.
And it was like this time last year, and we just didn't have
And we didn't get information, and it was a lot, it was, I know.
She might be able to.
Yeah, maybe I'll I'll get in touch with her and see what she knows, rattle her cage a little bit. If anybody could rubbing shoulders with Stephen King.
I'm working on the Powerball. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so tentatively, we could meet again, when did you say, February?
February twenty fifth?
February twenty fifth.
For Tuesday?
Uh tentatively, if if we if we don't have any if we don't have any fresh information between now and then, there's there's no point.
We'll know a week before, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we can we can put, we can put the ring the cowbell and and tell people to assemble if we've got something to work on, otherwise we but we do need to meet at least a couple of weeks before the twenty, before the town meeting.
Yeah.
So that we we've got some information. And I need to check, I need to check with Brian or Michelle to what you need to do with the
And that could be what our meeting on the twenty fifth is agenda is too.
Okay. February twenty fifth, tentatively.
Yeah.
Okay, uh Pat Bell, I need to call. And
The one above Brian, we have the two ladies.
Yeah.
Um she gave quite a lot of money for us to do the roof open, which is historical society, I mean, it's and she gave a lot to the Gilford Historical Society. They're Samuel people. They might be willing to donate quite a bit.
You do a GoFundMe too.
Yeah, like, we need to get
I mean, once we get figured out.
Talking about fundraising, you know, the rules around it.
The GoFundMe for like people that can go anonymous.
Right, and that's another thing, so as far as like fundraising and the committee members going out in the community, um we wanna make sure that some aren't speaking on behalf of the committee or collecting on the behalf. Like, um until we know the rules, I would say, direct them to the town, all the money should you know, the donation should go to the town, or they mail it in or whatever. Or bring it to a meeting and we can discuss it.
They can just earmark it.
Yeah, or promising any business or work towards the town hall, you know, like, we have to discuss.
We will have much more incentive if we can, if we can leverage some of the, some grant money, and we have raised only twenty five percent, you know, instead of having raised the whole thing.
So direction, I'm happy with you all, is basically what we took.
All right.
Research up.
Anything else?